Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 6:03 PM on Tuesday, October 19th, 2021. This virtual public hearing is now considered to be open. My name is Melinda Willannon, and I am an environmental engineer two for the NC Division of Air Quality's Mooresville Regional Office. I've been appointed to be the hearing officer for this virtual public hearing by the director of the Division of Air Quality, Mike Apreszynski. My purpose this evening is to receive in an orderly manner your oral comments for consideration in the issuance of an air quality permit to Enviva Pellet Sampson LLC for a first-time Title V air permit. This facility currently holds air permit number 10386R05 issued on June 9th, 2021 with an expiration date of September 30th, 2027 for a wood pellets manufacturing plant at 5 Connector Road, US 117, Fason, North Carolina. The Title V permit does not include any significant operational changes at the wood pellet facility. The focus of this public hearing, and the only focus, is to receive public comments on the proposed air permit for Enviva Pellets Sampson LLC as they relate to the applicability of air quality regulations. The Division of Air Quality is conducting this public hearing digitally to allow for public participation while protecting public health under current guidance to prevent the spread of COVID-19. This public hearing announcement was published in the Sampson Independent on September 15th, 2021, the Duplin Times on September 16th, 2021, and the DAQ's website on September 15th, 2021. The Division of Air Quality regulations for the issuance of a Title V permit does require a hearing or public or comment period for the issuance of this permit. The required 30-day public notice for this virtual public hearing was published as previously stated on October 15th, 2021 in the Sampson Independent and on September 16th, 2021 in the Duplin Times and on the DAQ's website. The comment period for this permit opened on September 15th, 2021 and will close on October 21st, 2021. The required duration for a comment period is 30 days for our 15A NCAC 2Q0300 rules. The comment period for this permit will have been a total of 36 days. In addition to your oral comments tonight, the Division is also accepting comments via mail, electronic mail, and by phone to voicemail box. The email address is DAQ公眾@ncdenr.gov. The phone number with a voicemail box is 919-707-8430. During this virtual public hearing tonight, we will be receiving oral comments from those individuals who pre-registered to speak at this event. If you are having technical difficulties with WebEx, you can use the chat feature in WebEx to ask questions or seek assistance. You can also visit the Division of Air Quality's website using the link in the public notice for this hearing for instructions on various ways to connect to WebEx. Joining me for this hearing tonight by WebEx are, from DAQ's Raleigh Central Office, Michael Pajetra, Deputy Director for the Division of Air Quality, Betty Gattano, Permitting Section Engineer Three for the Division of Air Quality, Heather Wiley, Meteorologist with the Atainment Planning Branch, and from DAQ's Fayetteville Regional Office, we have Heather Carter, Regional Supervisor, and Stephen Allen, Environmental Specialist Two and Inspector for Enviva Pellet Sampson Now, I would like to take the opportunity to recognize any local dignitaries such as town mayors, city or county officials, or state elected legislatures that are present. Thank you for your time and commitment to this public hearing. I want to thank everyone involved in getting this public hearing scheduled and organized with special thanks to Heather Wiley for her technical expertise in setting up this Copies of this permit application and air permit application review, the draft air permit, and other information concerning the Enviva Pellet Sampson LLC application are available to the public at the following locations. The Division of Air Quality Fayetteville Regional Office, located at the Systel Building at 225 Green Street, Suite 714, Fayetteville, NC 28301. The Division of Air Quality Central Office Permit Section, located at 217 West Jones Street in Raleigh, North Carolina, 27603. If you haven't done so and wish to review these materials in person, they are available to you during normal business hours at the locations I just mentioned. However, due to COVID-19, an appointment is required. Please call in advance to make an appointment. A copy of the draft permit and the permit application review are also available on the Division of Air Quality's website at www.ncair.org. The order of events for this hearing are as follows. First, Ms. Betty Gattano of DAQ Central Office Permitting Section, who reviewed the permit application and wrote the draft permit, will discuss the application DAQ received from Enviva Pellet Sampson LLC for the air permit and the air permitting procedures. This will be followed by the public comment period. We will receive oral comments from those individuals who pre-registered to speak at this event. If you registered and your name was not called, there will be time allowed after the last pre-registered name has been called to receive your comment. This will allow us to have an accurate hearing record. To provide enough time for public comments, this meeting will be conducted in the following All efforts will be made to call speakers in the same order of your registrations. Oral comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. I will call the names of each of the pre-registered speakers in order, and our WebEx host will unmute the speaker when it is their turn to speak. I will also announce the name of the next speaker in the queue so they can prepare to provide their comments when their names are called to speak. Please do not start speaking until the WebEx host has indicated that your microphone has been unmuted. Your time will begin when the WebEx host has unmuted your microphone. I will monitor your time and will announce when your three minutes have expired. Please respect the time of all who wish to present oral comments tonight by adhering to the time limits and closing your remarks as quickly as possible once time is up. Cross-examination of the person presenting comments will not be allowed. However, as the hearing officer, I may ask questions to the presenter for clarification. Questions directed to Division of Air Quality staff members will not be answered during this hearing. If you have questions for DAQ staff, we can provide you with our contact information so you may contact them after the meeting during normal office hours. After receiving comments this evening, the hearing record will be closed. However, the period for submitting comments does not close until October 21st, 2021 at 5:00 PM. You have until October 21st at 5:00 PM to submit additional written comments. Again, the only focus of this hearing is the presentation of oral comments related to air quality issues associated with issuing an air quality permit to Enviva Pellet Sampson LLC and the applicability of air quality regulations. Only relevant air quality comments can be considered, and my final recommendations to our Division Director. I will now call on Ms. Betty Gattano of DAQ Central Office Permitting Section to discuss the air permitting procedures and permit application review.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Good evening. My name is Betty Gattano, and I'm the Permitting Engineer for the first-time Title V permit application for this facility. Next slide, please. Enviva Sampson LLC, or Enviva Sampson, currently holds air permit number 10386R05 issued on June 9th, 2021 with an expiration date of September 30th, 2027 for a wood pellets manufacturing plant in Fason, Sampson County, North Carolina. The facility is currently permitted to produce up to 657,000 oven-dried tons per year of wood pellets utilizing up to 100% softwood on a 12-month rolling basis. Plant operations consist of a debarker and log chipper, greenwood hammer mills, a wood fire dryer, dry wood hammer mills, dried wood handling operation, pellet presses and coolers, product handling activities, and ancillary operations. Enviva Sampson is currently classified as a major source under both the Title V and Prevention of Significant Deteriation, or PSD, programs. The facility is also a major source of hazardous air pollutants, or HAPs. The facility is currently permitted to install additional controls to reduce emissions from the dry hammer mills and the pellet presses and coolers, and has accepted enforceable limits on emissions that will allow the facility to become a minor source under PSD and an area source of HAPs. Upon installation and operation of the additional control devices and initial testing to show compliance, the facility will no longer be a major source with respect to PSD or a major source of HAPs. Next slide, please. Enviva Sampson is allowed to construction operate under 15A NCAC 02Q0300, providing a Title V permit application is submitted within one year from the date of beginning of operation. The facility began operation on October 3rd, 2016, and the first-time Title V permit application was received on September 29th, 2017, which was within the time period allowed. Because the facility's operation and emission sources have been modified several times since the first-time Title V permit application was received, Enviva Sampson submitted an amendment to the permit application which was received on October 2nd, 2020. The purpose of this permit application is to complete the procedural requirements of obtaining a Title V permit, including the required 30-day public comment period and 45-day EPA review period. Next slide, please. The Title V permit will replace the existing permit issued under the State Construction and Operating Program. Changes to the permit made as part of this procedural permit modification include the following: reformatting the permit in accordance with Title V structure and permit conditions, and adding the Title V general conditions to the permit. Other changes to the permit include the following: removing the hammer mill area and pellet cooler low-pressure fines relay system and associated backhouse. This equipment is part of a closed-loop system and is not vented to the atmosphere. Removing the pellet sampling transfer bin and associated backhouse. This equipment was not installed. Adding two propane vaporizers to the insignificant activities list. Moving the additive storage and handling to the insignificant activities list. And updating the calculation methodology for this emission source. And updating the emission calculation methodology for volatile organic compounds from storage tanks. All proposed changes to the permit are addressed in the first-time Title V draft permit application review and the draft permit, both of which are available for review on DAQ's website.
Thank you, Betty. At this time, we will hear from those who pre-registered to provide oral comments this evening. When your name is called, our WebEx host will unmute your microphone so that you may provide your comments. To ensure our records are complete, please clearly state your name and who you are representing. Your comments will be recorded, so please speak loudly and clearly towards your computer's microphone or telephone speaker. Please do not start speaking until the WebEx host has indicated that your microphone has been unmuted. If you are using a telephone, please press *3 to raise your hand so the WebEx host can identify your line to be unmuted. This is critically important for the clarity of your comments. Please turn down any speakers that you have that can create feedback. If there is significant feedback on your line, we may need to mute your call and attempt to come back to you later. If we call your name but cannot hear you after you have been unmuted, please check to see that you are muted on the WebEx screen on your computer. If you are having audio issues, try a different method of audio connection within WebEx or use the Call Me feature to have WebEx call your personal telephone. If we still cannot hear you, we will proceed to the next registered speaker, but we'll call your name again at the end of the hearing. I will do my best to pronounce your names correctly and apologize in advance for any errors. As I call on speakers, I will also announce the next speaker so that they can be prepared to speak next. We will now begin taking oral comments. The first name that I have on the list is Anita Cunningham or Joanna Cunningham. And next after that would be Jessica Marcus.
Joanna Cunningham, your mic has been unmuted. Joanna Cunningham, you may proceed with your comment.
Is there an Anita Cunningham?
Okay, we'll move on to Jessica Marcus. Jessica Marcus, your microphone has been unmuted. You may proceed with your comment.
Great, thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to make comments at this hearing. My name is Jessica Marcus. I'm the Vice President of Policy for the U.S. Industrial Pellet Association. YCIPA is a nonprofit trade association based in Richmond, Virginia, that promotes sustainability and safety practices within the U.S. wood energy industry. Our membership includes large-scale producers of sustainable wood biomass across the southeast, and Enviva is one of our founding members. As you consider Enviva's permit application, I would like to emphasize that leading scientific authorities and real-world data confirm the positive benefits of wood biomass for the climate, for our environment, and for rural economies like the Sampson community. According to the world's foremost climate experts, wood bioenergy limits global warming by replacing fossil fuels and keeping our forests intact. This is the conclusion of the UN Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, which is widely considered to be the global authority on climate science. The IPCC makes clear that forests and forest products have an essential role to play in mitigating climate change. In its August 2019 Special Report on Land and Climate, the IPCC indicated that bioenergy and sustainable forestry are critical components in keeping the earth's warming below 1.5C. Specifically, the IPCC stated that sustainable forest management, which aims at storing carbon while also yielding timber, fiber, and bioenergy, will produce the best results for the climate. Wood biomass also benefits the environment by strengthening the market for forestry. It provides additional income for landowners to help them keep planting trees versus converting their land to other uses. It is because of these strong markets that data from the U.S. Department of Agriculture shows that forest inventory and forested area in the U.S. Southeast have steadily increased since 1950s, and forest carbon stocks have more than doubled during that same time period. Wood biomass is a meaningful but small part of the overall forest economy. It accounts for just 3% of all wood harvested each year across the Southeast. Therefore, it's easy to see why our forests remain stable, productive, and healthy even as they provide a steady supply of renewable forest products, including biomass. Finally, biomass provides a vital source of economic support for communities like Sampson. Enviva has already invested more than $160 million into their Sampson facility, and the plant currently supports over 80 direct jobs as well as over 250 additional indirect jobs in the region. These indirect jobs are in industries such as logging, transportation, and contracting. Additionally, these are well-paying jobs. The average wage at the plant is 30% higher than the county average. Enviva's total annual economic impact in North Carolina is approximately $1 billion per year. The science and facts show us that an approved permit at the Sampson facility will allow Enviva to continue displacing coal, growing more trees, fighting climate change, and providing jobs and economic investment for the local community. Thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you, Jessica Marcus. The next speaker on the list is Yana Krapsova, followed by Chris Brown.
Yana Krapsova, you may identify your line by pressing *3. Yana Krapsova, you may identify your line by pressing *3. Okay, I'll move on. Chris Brown, your microphone has been unmuted, and you may proceed with your comment.
Thank you.
We're having trouble hearing you.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. Do I start again?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. I'm Chris Brown.
Okay, we can't, we still can't hear you. Can you get closer to your microphone?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you in the beginning. Maybe you just need to be closer to your microphone.
Let's see if my... I should be pretty loud. Okay.
Oh, that's better.
They will try it again?
Yes, please.
Sorry. Okay, third time. I am Chris Brown, Enviva's Senior Community Relations Manager. I support this permit since it reaffirms Enviva's commitment to operating its Sampson facility with the best air quality control technology. In my role, I have the pleasure of working closely with community leaders who share a common goal of improving the lives of others. Enviva's community efforts are highlighted by our ongoing partnerships. We are not just about donations of dollars. We volunteer our time and talent. One of our first partnerships in the Sampson community is with the town of Fason and its youth soccer program. Enviva has provided sponsorship dollars and volunteer time to establish the town's only youth soccer field. Now, children in the community can explore the game of soccer without traveling to other towns, and this is a big plus. Enviva also sponsors the Fason United Methodist Church Abundance Harvest Program that seeks to provide snacks, fruit, and other items to area youth during the summer. When COVID forced the closure of school, Enviva answered requests for additional support to get the program through the online session. Some of our other partners include the tremendous volunteer fire departments in the region, including the Fason Volunteer Fire Department led by Fire Chief Lee Kennedy. We certainly appreciate Chief Kennedy's support. We've provided direct sponsorship dollars to his department and several other volunteer and rescue teams in the area. Workforce development is also important to us. Enviva collaborates with Sampson Community College to help students further their education, whether it be as part of Sampson's early college program, associate degree program, or specialized training. I recently accepted a position on Sampson's Foundation Board this past year. As you can see from our examples, we care about our community. Our active and ongoing engagement with our community partners demonstrates this, and I appreciate the time and the opportunity to provide comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris Brown. The next person on the list is Stephen Barrington, followed by Stephen Stroud.
Stephen Barrington, your microphone has been unmuted, and you may proceed with your comment.
Thank you very much. My name is Stephen Barrington. I'm the Director for Sampson County Economic Development Commission, and I'm also calling representing the Chairman of our Board of Commissioners, Chairman Clark Wooton, as I speak on his behalf as well. First and foremost, we are supportive of Enviva's application for a Title V air permit. We recognize Enviva's work in Sampson County is actually much larger than their operations in the county. Their impact is global. In a small way, Sampson County lives vicariously through Enviva's mission to fight climate change. We're grateful for their work in this space. We hope they continue to fight this fight. Now, on another note, Enviva is a top-three company in Sampson County based on real and personal property, based on their taxable investment. They are very significant to our county. And much like Jessica Marcus had mentioned earlier, their impact to the county with the jobs that they have, providing a higher-than-average wage, is hugely beneficial for our county that has so much poverty. This is a significant win for the community itself and the residents that live, not just in Sampson County, but from other places and who travel to Sampson County to work. The resuscitation of industry is important to any community. It is for Sampson County. Having a strong renewable energy company in the community is absolutely a positive. Much like Chris Brown had mentioned, Enviva is an excellent corporate citizen. If a company wants to model good corporate citizen after another company, Enviva is a great example of that. They provide financial and in-kind support to agriculture, community, education, cultural events, arts, and more. Lastly, we're grateful for Enviva's continued pursuit of obligatory and necessary permits to continue operations in the community. We're grateful for Enviva. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen Barrington. The next person is Stephen Stroud, followed by Peter Daniel.
Stephen Stroud, your microphone has been unmuted, and you may proceed with your comment.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Stroud, and I serve as the Director of Environmental Affairs for Enviva. Thank you to the North Carolina Division of Air Quality for hosting the public hearing and for working with us during drafting of this first-time Title V permit. In consultation with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, Enviva submitted a draft Title V permit for our Sampson wood pellet production facility as required under the terms of the plant operating permit and federal, state law, and regulations. This draft permit has undergone a diligent and fulsome review by North Carolina Division of Air Quality, and we have worked to answer any and all questions. The first-time Title V permit does not incorporate any significant changes to our existing construction permit, which authorizes the installation and operation of additional control technology throughout the manufacturing process. We are working diligently to safely execute our emission control project, and upon completion of the construction project, the site will incorporate a consistent emission control strategy, which has successfully been deployed at our North Hampton plant. In permit production capacity, the Sampson plant will remain at 650,000 oven-dried tons per year. Incorporation of the additional emission controls associated with the dry hammer mill recirculation, the existing dryer RTO modifications, and the pellet cooler RTO/PRCO installation projects will significantly reduce emissions and transition the site to a synthetic minor source of criteria pollutants, as well as minor source of hazardous air pollutants. After project completion, the Sampson plant will conduct compliance testing, which will demonstrate our continual compliance and commitment to environmental stewardship. Enviva is growing to meet an increasing global demand for renewable wood bioenergy as a direct replacement for fossil fuels. As we work to meet this demand, we have made substantial investments, both in expanding production at our facilities and installing state-of-the-art environmental control technology across our fleet of plants and terminals, including Sampson. This reflects our continued strong commitment and leadership to have a positive impact on climate change with our sustainably sourced wood pellets that reduces carbon footprint for our customers by more than 85% on a life-cycle basis, the environment by operating our plants to minimize environmental impact, and engaging and contributing positively to our local communities. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Stephen Stroud. The next speaker is Peter Daniel, followed by John Hatcher.
Peter Daniel, your microphone has been unmuted. You may proceed with your comment.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Peter Daniel, and I serve as the Director of Government Affairs for the North Carolina Chamber. I first want to say thank you to the Division of Air Quality and the staff for putting on this public hearing, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. The North Carolina Chamber is the state's largest business association in the state. We have over 800 members, including Enviva. On behalf of the North Carolina Chamber and the statewide business community, I'm speaking today in support of Enviva's Title V permit application for its facility in Sampson, North Carolina. Enviva is a critical partner in the economic and community atmosphere in rural North Carolina. It is a company that provides good-paying jobs, community outreach and engagement, and a relationship that benefits both rural communities and our statewide business climate. Enviva is an active And Viva is an active NC Chamber member and is a valued partner in the statewide job creator community, one that continues to advance jobs and investments in our state. And Viva is a fantastic example of a corporate citizen who believes that the betterment of our environment and economic prosperity go hand in hand. And Viva's Sampson Facility, which has been operating since 2016, was successfully granted permits from the state to install additional air emissions control technology in 2019 and 2021. In addition to its core mission to displace coal with wood fiber, which is a renewable energy source, and Viva is focused on continuous improvement of all of its operations. All totaled and mentioned by previous speakers, and Viva has invested over $150 million in the Sampson Facility, providing over 80 direct full-time jobs, and makes a significant economic contribution to the regional economy. And Viva also demonstrates how it continues to be a positive corporate citizen by engaging with the local community through sponsorships and volunteer activities identified by community partners and as discussed by prior speakers. All this said, the North Carolina Chamber fully supports and Viva's Title V permit for the and Viva pellet Sampson Facility. And Viva is a company that is a proven to be a strong corporate citizen for the region and a strong contributor to the state economy. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter Daniel. The next speaker is John Hatcher, followed by Christine Diaz.
John Hatcher, your microphone has been unmuted. You may proceed with your comment.
Good afternoon, everyone. I first would just like to thank the Division of Air Quality Directors for holding this public hearing tonight. My name is Dr. John Hatcher. I'm the Executive Director of the North Carolina Forestry Association. We would like to voice our support of and Viva's Title V permit application for its facility in Sampson, North Carolina. I will be submitting written comments by email. And Viva is one of 4,000 NCFA members that play a critically important role in North Carolina's $34.9 billion forest economy, providing 85-plus direct jobs and more indirect jobs, as mentioned earlier, for local citizens while providing a much-needed market for forest landowners. And Viva's commitment to sustainability practices ensures that our state's forest resources will provide clean air, clean water, abundant wildlife habitat, and good-paying jobs for generations to come. And Viva is also committed to being a good corporate citizen. They invest in local schools and charitable nonprofits, and they are committed to working with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality to ensure that they are in compliance with all state, federal laws. In closing, thank you for this opportunity for the North Carolina Forestry Association to speak in support of and Viva's Title V permit application for its facility in Sampson, North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you, John Hatcher. The next speaker is Christine Diaz, followed by Belinda Joyner.
Christine Diaz, your microphone, your microphone's been unmuted. You may proceed with your comment.
Okay. My name is Christine Diaz with Clean Water for North Carolina. And Viva facilities in North Carolina have brought significant public health and climate change concerns for communities under the false guise that they are sustainable, climate-friendly industry. The wood pellet industry is not a part of North Carolina's Clean Energy Plan. A study accounting for the entire production chain found that US-sourced wood pellets burnt in the UK were responsible for 13 to 16 million tons of CO2 emissions in 2019. Tree loss from supplying operations also impacts climate change resiliency, making effects of floods and other extreme weather more severe. And Viva sites continue to violate the Clean Air Act, experience equipment failures, and fail to implement or comply with control measures. And Viva has accumulated five air quality voluations at the Sampson County Plant alone since 2017. The fire in late April was the second fire at the Sampson Facility, and at least the sixth fire at an and Viva plant in the southeast since 2014. Apart from and Viva's environmental burden on North Carolina communities, Sampson County residents are already overburdened by industry. The overwhelming majority of polluting industries are located in communities of color, including industrial hog and poultry operations, a large landfill, and soon-to-be-constructed 30-mile methane pipeline. North Carolinians who live in areas with dense industrial swine operations have a higher rate of mortality from anemia, kidney disease, bacterial infection, or sepsis and tuberculosis, as well as a higher rate of death and infant mortality compared to other residents in the state. And Viva Sampson contributes to further cumulative impacts on the community. Wood pellet production creates many pollutants, including particulates, carbon monoxide, and nitrogen. These pollutants can hurt lung function, worsen asthma, cause heart attacks, and premature deaths. Pellet production plants also release volatile organic compounds, which can cause health problems for all, already vulnerable populations, including children, the elderly, and people with asthma. And Viva should comply with the Title V provisions, but stronger monitoring and reporting requirements are necessary to ensure the air and water quality of Sampson County residents is protected. We ask that you require and Viva to develop and implement a fugitive dust control plan to dampen the impact that harmful dust pollution is having on the surrounding community and incorporate that plan into and Viva's Title V permit. Thank you for your time. We will also be submitting written comments.
Thank you, Christine Diaz. The next speaker is Belinda Joyner, followed by Evil Smith.
Belinda Joyner, your microphone has been unmuted. You may proceed with your comment. Belinda Joyner, your microphone has been unmuted. You may proceed with your comment.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I am Belinda Joyner. I live in North Hampton County, which is home to an and Viva plant, and I'm just sitting here listening to the hen-horn of all the people that represent and Viva. Of course, they went first to do their little spiel. And I'm listening to the gentleman talk about soccer field and the children playing soccer, what they do. But what are you doing for the people that you're sitting right in their front yards, their backyards, their side yards, when they're breathing all these pollutants every day? And you talk about, oh, we do this for the community, we do that. What are you doing for the people that's directly impacted? And when you're talking about children playing soccer, when little Johnny get asthma from breathing these pollutants in, is and Viva gonna pay their hospital bills? The first thing they'll say, oh, no, that didn't happen. We didn't cause that. All and Viva is, is profit over people. All they're looking for is a dollar. When they ship those, those pellets overseas, people over there suffering, we over here suffering. We're losing our trees, habitat for, for, for our animals. You know, we're losing our oxygen, and, and, and they act like, you know, they're the greatest thing since popcorn that came here, but they're, they're not really helping us. All they're doing is harming us. So, you know, we've been through this, and we already know that DEQ gonna give them a permit because that's what y'all do, with no concern or no consideration to the people, like I say, that live right there in the backyard and the front yard, which none of you live in this community or live in these areas where we are impacted. So it's all right if it's not in your backyard to say, are we gonna do this, or we did that, or we did that. Somebody need to wake up because you're killing people every day. And like I say, when it happens, the first thing you're hollering, oh, no, we, we didn't cause that. You know, our pollution didn't cause that. It'll be a reason why. So I am totally against it. Like I say, I live with it, the noise, the traffic, excuse me, 24/7, people not being able to come out in the yards and work, cook out because of the dust, power washing and power spraying their houses because of the dust, and this is what Title V is supposed to be about? But then once you give them a permit, nobody comes from Raleigh to make sure that they're doing, are in compliance with what they're supposed to be doing. You just grant it, and like I said, because you're not here, and you don't have to endure it. So all this is, is a game, you know, it's been going on for years. I've been on these calls, and I still see no results as far as the people that are being directly impacted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Belinda Joyner. The next speaker is Evil Smith, followed by Heather Heliker.
Evil Smith here. Microphone has been unmuted. You may proceed with your comment.
Well, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So my role, I was the former exec, I'm the former Executive Director of the Carolina Loggers Association, and I want to thank you all for having the hearing. Appreciate that. And I think these hearings are really important because while no company is perfect, it definitely does help to hold the companies accountable. And for the time I was Executive Director, and Viva watched them do the best that they can under all the circumstances, and they try to do the right things. And we, the loggers appreciate that for, for sure. Everyone on this call can be grateful for our loggers too, who live in these communities and live around the entire state of North Carolina. These, these folks put their lives on the line every single day. Everybody on this call uses paper. Everybody in this calls, most people's homes are built with lumber. Everybody's impacted by the products that come from the woods that the loggers literally put their lives on the line every single day. And that's not the only risk that they take. They take a huge financial risk with all the equipment that they own and the, and the leverage that's against them owning that equipment. And they run on very, very tight margins. So markets like and Viva has created vitally important, vitally important to the, to the entire wood community that I believe John Hatcher alluded to, which is a $39 billion business to the state of North Carolina. So we appreciate the, the work that and Viva does. We appreciate their efforts to try to do the right thing, and we appreciate their, their, their long-term vision for working on environmental issues. So we are in support, I'm in support, I should say, for the and Viva Title V permit, and I thank you for the time given here, and I appreciate your, 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 you're listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Evil Smith. The next speaker is Heather Heliker, followed by Lee Kennedy.
Heather Heliker, your microphone has been unmuted. You may proceed with your comment.
Thank you. My name is Heather Heliker, and I am providing comments tonight on behalf of the Southern Environmental Law Center. My comments tonight focus on the need for DEQ to strengthen the fugitive dust requirement with the draft Title V permit by incorporating quite specific dust factors into that permit. As DEQ is well aware, fugitive dust is a primary concern of those living next to and Viva's wood pellet mills throughout North Carolina, including the Sampson Facility. For years, community members have been publicly...
I'm sorry, we're having a little hard time hearing you. You're a little muted.
Is this any better?
A little better, yes.
Okay, I was trying to keep my speaker loud for no feedback. Can you hear me now?
It's a little better.
I'll speak up. Fugitive dust from wood pellet mills comes from several parts of the manufacturing process, including wood handling, storage piles, conveyor transfer points, yard dust, haul road dust, and engine exhausts. Inhalation of fugitive dust can cause serious health problems, including damage to lungs and respiratory systems. Recently, DEQ denied the same request as it applies to the and Viva North Hampton Facility. Although DEQ conducted several unannounced inspections to look for evidence of dust leaving and Viva's property, it found no evidence and denied the request. By other physical evidence, including videos and photographs showing fugitive dust reaching the property of nearby residents. Given the well-known dust issues associated with pellet mills throughout the country, DEQ must do more to protect local communities. Physically, DEQ should engage in a comprehensive review and investigation of fugitive dust from pellet mills in North Carolina, which includes a concerted effort to engage with nearby residents to inquire about their experiences and concerns related to dust. Many people in these communities do not know about the nuances and Carolina's regulations regarding the control of fugitive emissions. They don't know what constitutes a substantive complaint, nor do they know how to make such a complaint. DEQ should work with the community and offer to help nearby residents appropriately document any physical evidence of excess dust emissions as required by the regulations. Moreover, since it may be difficult for DEQ inspectors to observe dust emission actually leaving the pellet mills' property, especially if a lot of that dust is occurring at hand, DEQ should accept photographs and videos of physical evidence and otherwise properly inspect settled dust on adjacent property to determine whether it came from the adjacent pellet mill as allowed for under the Carolina regulations. So DEQ should utilize this opportunity when developing Sampson's first-time Title V permit to listen to the community and require and Viva to develop and implement a fugitive dust control plan, which is then incorporated into the Title V permit. DEQ should also conduct a comprehensive review of dust issues associated with pellet mills throughout the state and assist the communities in ensuring that their complaints are addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather Heliker. The next speaker is Lee Kennedy, followed by Lib Hutchbee.
Kennedy, your microphone has been unmuted. You may proceed with your comment.
Good evening. My name is Lee Kennedy. I'm the Fire Chief for the Faceon Fire and Rescue in Faceon, North Carolina. We are in full support of the permit for the and Viva pellet plant. We are the first new fire department for the and Viva pellet plant, meaning that any emergency, whether it be fire, EMS, or technical rescue that occurs at the and Viva pellet plant, we are the first department and the first responders that go out to the plant and help with whatever incident is going on. Since the pellet plant's opening, we have gone to the plant less than 5% of the time in the years that we have run calls in that area. So the burden of that plant has not put any strain on our department as far as responding and be able to provide service to the area. They have actually added water points and fire hydrants at the facility that help us obtain water when we have fires either at the plant, which have been very minimal, or if we have fires in nearby areas that do not have hydrants. This has not only helped us in that, but it has lowered our insurance rating, and we dropped to save for homeowners and businesses in the area. We also have had full support of the and Viva pellet plant with any kind of equipment that we have needed to purchase, whether to use at the facility in our actions or elsewhere in our district. So it's not just that they've provided us equipment for their plant exclusively, but it's to use any and everywhere. They've also helped us financially in projects, fundraisers, feeding us, thanking us for what they've done, alongside the other seven fire departments that would respond to the plant in the event of an emergency. I would say that reissuing this permit would be a good thing for the community. It will be a good thing for the department and for our economy. We appreciate you so much for having this public comment tonight, and again, we're in full support of this. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, Lee Kennedy. The next speaker is Lib Hutchbee.
Lib Hutchbee, your microphone has been unmuted, and you may proceed with your comment.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Wonderful. I'm affiliated with, I am Lib Hutchbee. I am affiliated with Women's International League for Peace and Freedom in the Triangle. I'm also a founding member of the 350.org in the triangle. I am, do not appreciate and Viva for several reasons. Trees are the best method of carbon capture that we have. Trees are essential to breathing because they give off oxygen, right? That's what you would agree to. This is the Department of Air Quality, and we really appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to make public comment. And Viva cuts the trees, donates money to the community, and steals the oxygen required to breathe and to live in healthy neighborhoods. Children can play soccer, but they have to be able to breathe to do that. Violating the Clean Air Act is not a contribut, contribution to the health of Sampson County residents. Actually, we just heard someone say, contribution to premature deaths is what actually is happening in Sampson County with and Viva. We need to hold and Viva accountable. We ask that you require and Viva to develop and implement a fugitive dust control plan to mitigate the impact that harmful dust pollution is having on the surrounding community and incorporate that plan into and Viva's Title V permit. In fact, I would hope you wouldn't grant the permit at all. However, it sounds as if someone has convinced you that... However, it sounds as if someone has convinced you that money is more important than health. It's obvious that Sampson County landfill has been toxic to the community. According to state's latest data, there are over 2 million hogs in the county, the second most in the nation. From 2012 to 2019, the estimated number of chickens and turkeys in Duplin, Sampson, and Robinson Counties swelled from 83 million to 113 million, a 36% increase. Please, please pay attention to the health of the community and consider all of these industries, and understand that North Carolinians who live in areas dense with industrial swine operations have a higher rate of mortality from anemia, kidney disease, bacterial infection, on it goes. Well, what does Enviva do? Enviva has been emitting 13 million to 16 million tons of CO2 in 2019 alone. This is not acceptable. Cutting the trees releases CO2 into the air. We know that. It takes decades for new trees to absorb the same amount of CO2 as its timbered forebears. Tree loss may also affect flood resiliency, which is a particular concern for Sampson and Duplin Counties. Please understand that families expect and want to have good neighbors. It sounds like Enviva's gone out of their way to try to contribute money to be sure that the fire department has, and the community has a soccer field and all of these things. But what are they doing to provide healthy citizens in Sampson County? I think DAQ needs to really think more than twice about this experience. Thank you for allowing this conversation.
Thank you, Lib Hutchbee. At this time, we are going to go back and call on Anita Cunningham and Yana Krupsova.
Anita Cunningham, if you are present, please press star three to identify your line. Yana Krupsova, if you are available, please press star three to unmute your line or to identify your line.
That is all of the names of the people who have registered to speak in the order that they registered. At this time, if you would like to speak, please put your name in the WebEx chat box, which you can access at the bottom right-hand side of your screen. Once we call your name, we will ask you to either raise your hand in WebEx or press star three on your phone so that we can allow you to be unmuted and provide your comments. Once you have provided your comments, please lower your hand or again, press star three. And I see a couple hands in chat or in the, I see a couple of raised hands. If you've already spoken, can you please lower your hand? permit to Enviva Pellet Sampson LLC, remember there are several other ways to provide comments until the end of the comment period on October 21, 2021. You can call 919-707-8430 and leave a voicemail message with your first and last name, whom you are representing, and state your comments on the proposed permit. Or you can provide written comments until the comment period ends on October 21, 2021 at 5:00 p.m. To provide written comments, please email them to DAQ公眾@ncdnr.gov with EnvivaSampson.17B in the subject line. You can mail written comments to the address listed in the public notice. You can fax written comments to 919-715-0717, and please address it to Ms. Betty Gattano. I would like to thank everyone for your attendance this evening and for your interest in this public hearing process. Based on the information received during tonight's virtual public hearing and comments received throughout the comment period, I will make a recommendation to the Director of the Division of Air Quality for his consideration in making a final decision on whether to issue, modify, or deny the air permit to Enviva Pellets Sampson LLC. Again, I thank you for your cooperation, attendance on this virtual public hearing, and interest in the air quality permitting process. This public hearing is now adjourned.